Good evening, I'm gonna call this meeting to order. Please rise for the flag salute.
My pleasure students. To the right of the United States of America. When you do your work with your hands on your nation, under God, in the digital, with the breathing and justice for all.
Rule call.
Director Miller.
Here.
Director Winskill.
Here.
Director Ushka.
Here.
Director Heinz.
Here.
And please note for the record that Director Vial has an excused absence. Item number one, adoption of agenda.
I move approval of the agenda.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, abstention, motion carries four zero. Item number two, recognition of staff, students, and community.
Good evening, directors. Good evening Superintendent Santorno and Assistant Su, uh, my boss. I call him boss man, so Josh, good, good evening. It's my pleasure to come to you on behalf of the Community Partnership Department. We are going to recommend a community partner for a Gold Star Partner Award. And a little bit of background that I always preface my statements with, we did a lot of work coming up with our definition of what partnership is for Tacoma Public Schools. And we define it as a partnership being a cooperative relationship between students, families, schools, school districts, and the greater Tacoma community. Partners are committed to supporting student academic success and the whole child. Partners work with and invest in the education of our children and youth whose future in turn will affect the quality of life in the entire Tacoma community. When it comes to student success, TPS recognizes that schools cannot do it alone. And in recognition of an investment in time, talent, and resources for TPS students, families, and staff, the Gold Star Community Partner Award signifies honor and thanks to a community partner who has made a difference by doing what's best for kids. So for tonight, under your consideration is Metro Park, is Metro Parks Tacoma. They've been serving our community for over a hundred years. Metro Parks service to the community extends beyond maintaining and caring for Tacoma's parks and resources and environmental conservation. They're a strong partner in supporting student success. Metro Parks Tacoma runs the Sparks Program. It's a fun free after-school club that does activities for kids that include instructional sports and fitness, outdoor and nature adventure, visual and performing arts, cooking, and homework support. This year Sparks, in a field trip, they allowed the students to go sledding and tubing and to the mountains. Ninety-seven percent of the youth that went on a trip had never been to any mountain to play in the snow, and play in the snow. So Sparks participants at Truman, Meeker, and Stewart receive quality mentorship and Sparks staff connects with the students and their family and often serves as a bridge to community resources. Metro Parks Tacoma partners with Tacoma Public Schools and they're also a champion for inclusion. The Community-Based Transition Program for Youth with Disabilities, also known as Realized Recreation, provides the same enrichment and recreation activities for youth with special needs. This summer, Metro Parks Tacoma will continue to support students and increase reading scores with identified Title I 3rd graders who have, are challenged by reading scores. They're gonna be providing daily best practice, intensive reading intervention for students from Bernie, Arlington, Edison, Fawcett, and Mann Elementary Schools. And through a partnership with Metro Parks, Wapato Parks Extended Day Program, they will be providing before and after childcare with safe supervised and extended summer camp programs in a beautiful park. So these are wonderful opportunities for our, for our students and we really appreciated them. And it is my recommendation as the Director of the Partnership Office that the Board recognizes Metro Parks Tacoma as being awarded the Gold Star Community Partner Award. And I have that award and representing Metro Parks, we have President Reed, he can come up now. And he has a few words to share.
Hi. As I was introduced, I am Tim Reed and it's my honor to be President this year of the Metro Parks Board. My honor to accept the Gold Star Partners Award on behalf of my fellow Board of Commissioners and the staff at Metro Parks Tacoma. For decades now, our agencies have been committed to a collaborative partnership that best serves the public's needs, interests, and interest by maximizing the use and benefits of our mutual assets, including fields, gyms, pools, and building spaces. Planning together strategically for development of these shared assets and coordinating programming and services that help strengthen learning and wellness opportunities for our entire community. I and my fellow board members are extremely proud of what schools and parks have developed together to enrich the quality of life for all residents. We appreciate this recognition and look forward to continued shared achievements for decades to come. Now, on a personal note, I'm gonna brag a little bit here, I would like the citizens to know what kind of agency Metro Parks is that the school district partners with. There are about 12,000 park districts in America. Of those 12,000, 115 are accredited. We were accredited last year. And when the accreditation team came out, they looked at, they had a booklet about this that reviewed our policies and our, part of it was also our associations and partnership with other government entities. We scored 100%. Now, of those 115, in the, in the last 50 years, about 10% are called best of the best. Last year, there were five best of the best park districts in America. Metro Parks Tacoma was one of those. One of the best of the best. So I want the good citizens of Tacoma to know that we have the best system in America. Thank you.
Thank you. President Reed, would you come up so we can thank you?
You don't have to stand up.
Here we do. You have to stand for the best of the best.
Best of the best.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What's this, candy? Thank you very much. Really appreciate it. This is great. Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
We're the, we're the, that's 'cause we're the best of the best, too.
Yes, you are.
Yeah.
Item number three, members of the public wishing to address the Board. Do we have any speakers today?
We do. First speaker is Rebecca Padilla, who would like to speak regarding the sports for Summit High School. That'll be followed by, I think it's Brielle Asberg, speaking regarding HNT and IDEA. Rebecca?
And before you begin, Ms. Padilla, I would remind the audience, School Board Members encourage public participation. Your input is appreciated. If you would like to address the School Board, follow these steps. Complete a Citizens Request to Speak card, which is located at the back of the auditorium. Submit the card to the School Board's Secretary prior to the start of the meeting. Cards submitted after the public comment period has ended will not be considered at this session. The Superintendent will call your name when it's your turn to address the School Board. Please speak into the microphone. You will have up to three minutes to share your comments. At the one-minute mark, you'll hear a ding, and at the zero-minute mark, you'll hear a second ding. Please begin.
Okay, thank you. Good evening Superintendent Santorno, Assistant Superintendent Garcia, and School Board Members. My name's Rebecca Padilla, and I would like to first thank you all for your hard work and dedication to Tacoma's children. I know how passionate all of you are about giving our students the best education possible. I've been a parent in Tacoma School District for 10 years, and I'm currently the PTA President at Sheridan, as well as a leader with Stand for Children at Sheridan, where my two youngest boys attend on the east side of Tacoma. My oldest son, Christopher, will be attending Summit Olympus in the fall, the first public charter high school here in Tacoma. With me this evening are three students that will be starting next year at Summit, Christopher and his friend Deja and Janai. One of the deciding factors for me in choosing to send my son to a charter school was that he had the opportunity to play sports at a local high school, similar to homeschool students. I, I was reassured by Summit that I would have this opportunity. On June 3rd, I emailed the Student Life Department and both Ms. Santorno and Dr. Garcia, inquiring on how the students of Summit could play sports in high school. I was very pleased to receive a response from Ms. Cavista the same day, and excited to hear that Mr. Reed would be following up with our principal regarding high school sports for the charter school students. We're on track, and she now can pass this information on to our families. Again, I'm so thankful for your attention to this matter. We are so excited to begin a new chapter this fall as we embark on a groundbreaking journey. I look forward to these kids having a personal learning plan, as well as a mentor that they meet with every day, and a curriculum that is mostly project-based. Personally, I love that Summit will be using restorative justice for discipline issues. With graduation rates in the Bay Area at 100% and college acceptance rates at 99%, we're willing to put the time and dedication it takes for Summit Olympus to be a successful high school here in Tacoma. I'm equally dedicated to helping relations between charter schools.
Ms. Padilla, do you have, we appreciate your comments that had an intersection to Tacoma Public Schools, but it seems that you've deviated from any business that has to do with Tacoma Public Schools and are now talking explicitly about Summit?
No, I just was saying that I'm equally dedicated to helping relations between charter schools and Tacoma Public Schools become more cohesive. After all, we can agree on one thing, that every child in Tacoma, regardless of race, gender, or zip code, has, deserves access to quality education in a climate that is safe and conducive to learning. Thank you.
Thank you.
Why don't you pronounce your name again, make sure we get it right?
Bryce Asberg.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you Board for the opportunity to speak today. I'm here because I have some concerns about the proposals for the HNT and the IDEA Academy, both of which I have reviewed online. While I'll agree with the stated goals of these school ideas, which is an emphasis on architecture, engineering design, health, nutrition, and training, and an equitable education for all, I don't, I'm here because I don't feel that these school proposals are the bet, are not sound policy if the goal is to truly achieve an equitable education for all students in the Tacoma Public School District. With the architecture industry expecting to grow by 17% between 2012 and 2022, why should only 575 students at max enrollment get the, get to benefit from an emphasis on architecture, engineering, and design? The same principle applies to an increased emphasis on health, nutrition, and training. Why should only a small portion of Tacoma students get to reap the benefits? If an equitable education is truly the goal that we desire, which I think we can agree that it is, then we should skip the new school designs and use the money saved to bring these kinds of programs to all of the high schools in our district so that every student can benefit from them. As an example of where this could be applied, I'd like to offer up my own high school, Wilson. Currently, we have few classes that would fit into the IDEA school model, yet we have a Chuhui glass-blowing class. While this may be fun, it hardly seems like an effective elective when it comes to raising up the next generation of skilled workers for our country and our local community, since, since almost nobody makes a career off of blowing glass. This elective could be replaced with engineering-type classes to the benefit of many students in my school. Another reason that these proposals should be rejected is because they lead to specialization too early. While they provide unique learning opportunities in their designated subjects, other subjects must suffer. Why should our kids be forced to attend another school if they want to learn more about a specific subject? If these programs and classes are brought to every school in our district, kids would be able to study a wide variety of topics and become well-rounded in many different subjects. Specialization at this age is very risky because few students know what they're going to do when they grow up, and those who think they do know often change their minds after they graduate. Exposure to many different areas is necessary to ensure that students know what kind of career they want to pursue. Granted, there are some students who know for sure what they want to do when they grow up, but these students are the exception, not the rule. And the role of government is to create sound policy that helps the most people possible not to craft sweeping changes that are geared towards helping a small segment of the population. I'd like to thank you all for your service to our school district as a member of the School Board, and as you make this decision, I urge you to please remember that our duty is to all of the students in Tacoma Public Schools and to the taxpayers whose money you have been entrusted to as stewards. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
That's all.
All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to item number four, Superintendent's Report.
So, today I've asked a program that's very popular in Tacoma Public Schools that has really brought, has added to our literacy efforts in Tacoma, Ready, Set, Read. And today, they usually come to us once a year to honor their program graduates, and today is that day. And I'd like to introduce Mallory Kost, who is gonna talk to us a little bit about Ready, Set, Read, and also introduce their program graduates.
Thank you Superintendent Carla, and good evening Board Members. I'm Mallory, I work with communities and schools of Tacoma, and I manage the Ready, Set, Read Tacoma Preschool Literacy Program. Our program is designed to help children prepare for kindergarten and help their children and their families get a jumpstart on their education. We partner with elementary school librarians to offer free storytimes, and we invite any family with a preschool-aged child to come and attend the storytime. Our program is unique because we require the parents, caregivers, or guardians to stay for the storytime. And librarians model really important storytime procedures like retelling the story, predicting, phonemic awareness. This modeling is really important because then the parents can take it home and extend the learning at home. After each storytime, kids get to check out the Ready, Set, Read Tacoma books, which all have reading tips on the inside, book activities to take home and extend the learning to increase comprehension. We track student progress in our program by comparing Ready, Set, Read Tacoma participants with their peers upon entering kindergarten using the WA Kids data. The 2013-14 data showed that the kindergartners who participated in Ready, Set, Read before entering kindergarten displayed significantly higher readiness in every single domain, especially in the literacy domain, which is really exciting. This past school year, we had over 550 preschool-aged children participating in the Ready, Set, Read program at 28 different elementary schools and 10 different community sites all around the city. And together, all those participants read over 6,000 books this past school year. Tonight, we're really excited to be here to honor each child who read over 50 books of the program, in the program set. This past school year, we had a total of 16 participants who did so. Today, we, we have the privilege of having several of our Ready, Set, Read grads here with us and their families. We're really excited to honor them. So when I call your guys' name, can you please come up here, line up, and shake the hands of each Board Members to congratulate you guys? Navea Woods from Blix Elementary. Isaiah Winkler from Browns Point. Let's see, Zylee Chase from Franklin. Alexia Ramirez from McCarver. Hope Shoes from McCarver. And Riley Sullivan from Sherman.
That's a great.
You are so smart, aren't you?
And what school is she going to? Or that? Sure.
There, oh, big smile. Oh, look at those readers.
Oh, that's wonderful. Wonderful.
Keep cat, apparently this works.
Look at that. Perfect.
All right, good job.
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Way to go.
Yeah, well, you get to draw the winning name. Yeah, so we're gonna have a grand prize drawing. All the kids that are here's name is in the little bucket. We have a grand prize of a learning tablet, really fun, and President Scott Heinz is gonna draw the winning name. Hope from McCarver.
Thank you so much, we appreciate the work that you do and the hours that you spend setting up this program, and all the parents that, we know that they wouldn't have read all those books without your help, so thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Right, we'll move on to item number five, consent calendar.
I move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries four zero. And before we move on Superintendent, I believe you have someone you'd like to introduce?
Approved in the consent agenda is Janet Fawcett, and I'd like to have Janet stand. Why don't you come to the podium and just say a few words about who you are Janet. Janet is one of our new elementary, our new director of Special Education Elementary, elementary special education. We're glad to have her and appreciate you being here Janet. Tell us just a little bit about yourself.
Okay, I am thrilled to be joining the Tacoma team. I have been in Renton for the last 17 years as a special education teacher and then as an elementary principal, and this is a great opportunity for me to learn and grow professionally, and you guys have a great team and I'm excited to join the team. Thank you. Thank you.
Welcome aboard. Item number six, policy matters, none to consider this evening. Item number seven, quarterly financial update. Item number eight, curriculum and instruction. Item 8A, approval of middle school math materials and printing costs from Engage NY.
The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of the Executive Director of Teaching and Learning recommends that approving the cost of printing materials estimated at $250,000, teachers' editions, and student workbooks for the 2015-2016 school year.
I move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries four zero. Item 8B, approval of educational-based services, addendum number two, increase.
The Deputy Superintendent on behalf of the Executive Director of Student Services recommends that the Board of Directors adopt the contract amended number two in the amount of $150,000 for education-based services, EBS.
Move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries four zero. Item 8C, authorization for purchase of Edgenuity software licenses for 2015 credit retrieval summer school.
The Assistant Superintendent of K-
Is she ready?
Speaking loud, I'm sorry. The Assistant Superintendent of K-12 Support recommends that the Board of Directors approve the purchase of 500 software licenses of Edgenuity Virtual Classroom and Web Administrator estimated at $206,000, $250,000 for the period of April 30th, 2014 through April 30th, 2016.
Move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments? I have a clarification, that is, for context, for the price of the licensing, that's 500 students, that's 500 seats at any one time, but we could run hundreds, if not thousands of students through potentially?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yes.
All right, hearing no other questions or comments, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries four zero. Item number nine, business matters. 9A, approval of agreement between Tacoma School District Number 10 and Pierce Transit.
I move approval. Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I'm so, I'm so much in a hurry here.
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve the acceptance of the agreement with Pierce Transit for 1,400 ORCA Passport Cards in the amount of $253,163 for the 15-16 school year.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Any questions or comments?
Can you share where those 1,500 pass, or ORCA cards go to?
Who they go to?
What schools?
Oh, what schools?
Yeah.
I cannot, and Ms. Race was not able to be here tonight, she had a family obligation, but I can get that back to you.
Well, usually it's Sammy and Sota.
It's usually Sammy and Sota.
Yeah.
Reengagement Center, Sammy, Sota, Oakland, and specific students who are eligible for transportation for particular reasons.
Okay, usually schools that don't have their own bus transportation system set up.
Correct, and then individual students where particular transportation has been established either through IAPs, 504s, or safety or support plans.
Okay, great.
And also the students at Raymond Hall who are participating at the day reporting school get bus passes.
Any other questions or comments? Director Winskill.
I'd like to make a comment. When I was at the School Board Convention in Nashville, I had a presentation from the Nashville School, School Board, and they actually started going to their local transit authority for all of their transportation. And I think they saw ridership go up by 40% in their city, and they have a huge district, I think like 80,000 students. So I started thinking, and I know that there are some restrictions, I know that, you know, you can't compete against private companies, but I, you know, when we have a, when we have a, our contract is up, I just like, like to consider a few things. So over the years, people have said our high schools start way too early, at 7:30 in the morning. But in order to send all the children to high school and then to come back with the buses and to send, you know, transport all the elementary students, it's really, pretty expensive. And if we could look at some way where we could actually go to something like this, ORCA cards for our high schools, start school early, kinda change our transportation system, you know, have a couple, a year and a half or so to look at it, I, I just think it would be much better for our students. And I also look at FOS, which has problems, the transportation system, it doesn't really start early enough, they have problems getting students to get to school on time, and I, I just think that overall it would be an improvement. So I'd just like to put that out there.
All right, thank you.
For a later discussion.
Well, I believe you, Seattle's done a lot of work on that lately, schools, school district. I would recommend to have somebody look at that and see what they've come up with. Part of having a transit doing it is the bus stops. And it's not a very good transit system right now, I don't think.
Well, the stops are all there, but-
But the, the routes aren't.
Well, yeah, but if we talk to them about increasing their routes, because we, this is what we used to do in Tacoma, 30 years ago, we didn't have a private bus system and it worked, so.
Director Ushka.
Thank you. Are you suggesting that then the schools would have later hours to accommodate?
For high school, yes, I think it'd be wonderful.
Okay, I just wanted to note that, because right now, even with optional enrollment, sometimes kids are getting on the bus at 5:00 in the morning to get across to their-
Yeah.
-high schools on time, so, I don't, well-
Yeah, well, I'd want it to, yeah, I would want them to start later. Yeah, well, I'd want it to, yeah, I would want them to start later. Yeah, a later start, so.
Yeah, that'd be great.
And I think a lot of people would like that, a lot of parents and especially high school students would like a later start. When my children first started going to high school, it started at eight thirty, so, just wanna throw that out there.
So for clarification, is there consensus from the board that we would like a cost analysis? What's the specific request?
Well, our contract, we still have a contract, and I don't know when that's up, in a couple of years, maybe, maybe not quite, a couple of years, but just, it gives us time to look at some other options.
I might, oh, go ahead, Karen.
I think that if we study the issue to see if there's ways to work to increase, um, transportation options for our students, um, while honoring our existing contracts, just on an informational basis, that would be the due diligence that I'm hearing.
So perhaps we can work to schedule, there's no sense of urgency if we're under contract, we can look to schedule a study session on transportation options for students? Director Miller?
So I would suggest seeing what Seattle and some other school districts around here have done, because I know there's been some studies done on this, so why reinvent the wheel when the work's been done, so.
No, pun intended.
We don't wanna go round and round.
Right, so, Superintendent, what I'm hearing is an interest on, uh, from the board.
We can do that.
We have new microphones, can we shut, uh, Director Miller off remotely? Uh, what I'm hearing is an interest in a study session on transportation options with a suggestion to look at Seattle.
Okay, good. And actually, Seattle is really, what they've investigated is a late, later start time, is what, they've had a committee on that, that issue.
They also have, they also have all of their, for the most part, all of their high schoolers use, get bus passes rather than ride school district transportation.
Yeah, two of my grandchildren go to Seattle schools and they have Orca cards.
Alright, any other questions or comments on the transportation issue? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries four zero. Item nine B, approval of McKinney-Vento Student Transportation Contract Negotiation and Award.
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors authorize the Superintendent to negotiate and award a contract for transportation services for students eligible for transportation under the McKinney-Vento Homeless Assistance Act to paratransit services.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I just have one question.
Director Winskill.
Just about, um, who that service is, is that part of, um, Pierce Transit, or is that a, a private company?
No, it is a, it's a nonprofit agency and it works with Medicare and first, and work first recipients.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question, my understanding is they came in as the lowest bidder?
Yes, I believe that they did, we were, we're currently using them, but we did do a rebid and it was, um, they were selected as the lowest.
So we're not just renewing their contract, we went through a competitive process and they've been selected?
Yes.
They've been vetted and selected again, okay. Any other questions or comments?
So part of this is to negotiate, as well as award a contract, so, still negotiating on it then.
Yeah, there's terms and conditions with which to negotiate.
Thank you.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries four zero. Item nine C, approval of an interlocal agreement with the city of Fife.
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors authorize the Superintendent to enter into an attached interlocal cooperative purchasing agreement with the city of Fife related to the QBSI Xerox contract.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, motion carries four zero. Item ten, other business, ten A, adoption of student rights, responsibilities, and regulations.
The General Counsel on behalf of the Director of Public Information recommends that the Board adopt the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen student rights, responsibilities, and regulations.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries four zero. Item ten B, ratification of the two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty collective bargaining agreement between Tacoma School District Number Ten and the membership of the Tacoma Coaches and Extracurricular Leaders Association.
The Director, can you hear me, okay? The Director of, uh, Employee and Labor Relations on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources recommends that the Board ratify the two thousand fifteen to two thousand twenty collective bargaining agreement between the Tacoma School District Number Ten and the membership of the Tacoma Coaches and Extracurricular Leaders Association.
I'll move approval.
Second.
Any questions or comments? I have a question, what do we pay coaches?
Oh, my.
Depends what sport.
There's, there are a number of different rates depending on what they're coaching, and all of those, uh, rates are included in the bargaining agreement. I didn't bring the bargaining agreement.
Can you give us a range? Are we paying football coaches a hundred thousand dollars a year?
No.
Okay.
Well, if they teach and you give us some context around how, what that looks like is a general range, I just, for, for clarification for the public, because there are neighboring districts and districts around the country that perhaps compensate coaches at a different level than we do, and I hear from community members concerned that we're hiring coaches, and my understanding of the coaching range, uh, uh, salary range is that you could not come in, into our system and just coach, it's not necessarily a lucrative.
Absolutely true. Yeah, well, I guess I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure your question on, the salary range would be based on the teacher's base salary rate as it stands right now in the current contract language, and then it's a percentage of that, so seven percent for the sport, which is a, uh, depending on the sport, a different period of time and a different level of, um, requirements, you know, hour, number of hours and nights of the week. Um, I think football coaches are closer to thirteen percent instead of seven that you might see with a bowling coach.
They are the higher paid of the coaches within the contract.
But it's, you know, it's dependent upon the season and it's all negotiated with the coaches group on the percentages.
And what if a coach is not a teacher?
We have, very many of our coaches are members of our staff, but not necessarily teaching staff. We have a large number of our classified staff members who serve as coaches as well, and so the compensation system has a rate system that applies to the coach, and also coaches who are not employ, there are coaches who are not employed by us, and again, their salary rate is bargained as well. Obviously, for individuals who are just coaching, it's not necessarily a full-time job by any way, shape, or form, though we have a lot of employees who work for us as security officers, classified staff members, and teachers who also coach. And one distinction of the pay between the two would be that, um, for certificated staff, we can offer them a stipend, which is a flat amount, and for classified staff, it's an hourly rate by law.
Okay.
Thank you. Deputy Superintendent?
A little perspective for an eighty-five thousand dollar salary, year salary, if, if an employee was making that, and thirty, at thirteen percent, it's approximately eleven thousand dollars, so it's nowhere near the hundred thousand. And when you look at the, uh, what's this contract versus what's happened in the past, the net impact to the district is about thirty-six thousand dollars, and so we haven't changed our practice from where we've been in the past. Uh, the negotiations team did a phenomenal job of securing, and then, to be fair, the staff have recognized what, uh, the economic conditions that we are in and, um, have, I think, presented a very respectful and representative to the amount of work that they're doing and serving our kids and being respectful to the community.
We've also expanded our sports offerings, so there are more coaches to compensate.
So I have a question.
Director Miller?
What if, uh, a booster club wanted to pay a coach to come in and just coach football, for instance? Would the booster club be able to do that? So we have a rule against that?
Within, within the contract, there's a, a provision that they can't receive supplemental income. For coaching.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstention, motion carries four zero. Item ten C, approval of Superintendent's contract. Oh, that's me. The President of the Board of Directors recommends ratification of the attached contract with Superintendent Carla Santorno to reflect a three-year period of employment commencing on July first, two thousand fifteen.
Move approval.
And now I'm going to look at General Counsel, would you please, uh, explain the terms?
If you could have somebody move it and second it.
Move approval?
I'll second it.
Uh, so the significant changes to this year's contract for the Superintendent are primarily adjusting dates, and so this is the same contract that the Superintendent received last year with new dates, with the exception that the provision related to termination without cause has been modified so that if the, if the Board elects to terminate the Superintendent without clause, she receives the balance of the remainder on the contract.
And is that consistent with most districts throughout the state?
Yes, it is very typical for new superintendents who are, uh, very early in their career, in their tenure as a superintendent for the, um, termination provision with respect to termination without cause to be a year or shorter, or eighteen months. It's very common that by the time a superintendent is at year two or three, the contract becomes a contract that provides the superintendent with the balance of the contract should it be terminated without cause.
And is there any additional compensation or benefit included in this contract?
The Superintendent, uh, receives a raise only consist, at the Board's direction, when Superintendent Santorno became the Superintendent, her compensation was tied to the compensation of our teachers, so the Superintendent only receives additional compensation when the district chooses to compensate its teaching staff at an additional amount, so the compen, base compensation for the Superintendent has, uh, risen reflective with the teach, the increase in compensation provided to the district's teachers last September.
Alright, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Deputy Superintendent Garcia?
I was looking at the, uh, the actual agenda item, and it says June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, for a three-year contract, so I think that we might need to-
Where, where do you see that?
Under the agenda item, when you do the link, it says Superintendent Contract, a three-year agreement set to expire on June thirtieth, two thousand seventeen, although it's the year two thousand fifteen.
The year, the contract actually runs, the current contract expires on June seventeenth. The proposed contract runs to June two thousand eighteen, so the, the reference in the background is that this is the contract, her prior contract is set to expire on June thirtieth, two seven, two thousand seventeen, the adoption of this contract changes that, so her contract would run until, uh, two thousand eighteen, thank you, Ross.
That's what I saw when I read the contract, is two thousand eighteen, so it's a three-year contract.
Correct, and it's just the background reference that her current contract, if the Board did not take action, would expire in June of two thousand eighteen, it's my understanding the Board would like the Superintendent to continue to have a three-year contract, so this change will extend her contract until two thousand and eighteen.
Any other questions or comments? Director Miller?
So, uh, Carla, thanks. You know, um, I don't know if people really realize what it takes to be a Superintendent of public schools. Um, you're everywhere, uh, it's twenty-four seven, I don't know how in the heck you can do it, because I sure wouldn't. Um, but really, uh, what you've brought to the district, the staff you've brought to the district, uh, when we did your evaluation, I mean, everybody was just going, you know, she's the person we need for Tacoma and we need her for a long time, so we wanted to make sure this contract showed that, that we don't want you to leave.
Thank you, this is a place where I plan on staying, so I appreciate your confidence and your support, you show it to me every single day. I appreciate the staff, um, I certainly, we certainly couldn't get the things done if we didn't have an incredible staff. Um, Josh is the best partner I've ever had, so that is also, uh, been really, I said it the right way.
Well, you're not comparing him to Larry, though, right?
No, I didn't, no, I said partner, I'm good. So anyway, I really appreciate your support, the work that you do, um, the, the homework that you do and the background and the way you, uh, you know, you show up and do what you're doing, that, that, that allows the staff to be successful, so thank you. I can't think of any other place I'd rather be.
Any other questions or comments? Uh, before we vote, I would just echo, uh, and add to Director Miller's statement that this, for us, is a way to, uh, to state to the community that we are very confident in your ability, we have a lot of work to do, but we want to do it together with you. We appreciate, uh, the way that you're leading not only the school district, but the city. Uh, I hear it all the time about how great you are, how approachable you are, how you're real and transparent, and that's the exact sort of leadership that we need right now, so, uh, thank you so much, we appreciate all your effort.
Thank you.
And I'm gonna channel Director Biel, can we have a roll call vote?
Absolutely. Director Miller?
Aye.
Director Winskill?
Aye.
Director Oshka?
Aye.
Director Heinz?
Aye.
The motion passes four zero.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Item number eleven, report to the Board.
So, Mr. Amir Khami is here today to kind of give us an, uh, give us an update on, uh, our building for achievement, and, uh, we'll give it to you, Steve.
Thank you. Good evening, President Heinz, School Board members, Superintendent Santorno, Deputy Superintendent Garcia. I'm gonna ask, uh, Rob Sawatsky, our Director of Planning and Construction, to join me. Uh, we have a PowerPoint to walk you through, but first I just wanted to say that, uh, we're about to embark on a journey of construction. We are looking at starting five different sites. We have Arlington on the design boards now, and we're gonna be looking for architects in the next two months for Mary Lion and Brown's Point, and so our department is gonna be busier than it's ever been, and it's gonna be exciting times, and so one of the things that we've been talking about is trying to increase the frequency of which we get in front of you to give you periodic updates, and so we'll be looking at monthly updates, um, with Friday reports and presentations to the Board at our public venues, so we can keep you informed, uh, as to the progress of how we're, how we're going. Um, so I'd like to introduce Rob, uh, he's here tonight, and we have a PowerPoint that should be up and running, so take it away.
Good evening. Uh, thanks for letting us have the opportunity to share with you and echoing what Steve said, uh, we want to increasingly make you aware of what's going on, uh, so that, uh, we're being as transparent as possible and, and get you excited about the awesome things that are happening. Just really quickly, uh, and I know, um, in the past, Steve has gone through these things with you before, but we wanted just to kind of do a refresh on when Board action is required, and we don't have it as a slide up here, but just as a, a quick refresh for you, um, there, there are times through our process where we need your approval on, on several items, and so it starts with our architectural selection, uh, moving through services and approval of education specifications. Um, would we need a resolution for non-racial imbalance or approval of value engineering? Uh, moving down through resolution for intent to construct, and then constructibility review and approval of a low-bid contractor, uh, with the exception of our GCCM process on a couple of our projects, which is a little bit of a different process, and then, uh, if required, any easements and right-of-ways purchases over five hundred thousand dollars from a single vendor, agency agreements with shared uses, and then final acceptance of the contract. And so, as we update you, um, you, you probably will see us more frequently over the next twelve to eighteen months because of all the projects that we have stacked on each other, and so I just wanted to remind you that we will be seeing you more frequently, uh, as we move through.
I would add too that we will be looking at, uh, the informal presentations, um, those are, the items that Rob listed are the ones that we need, uh, to proceed with our OSPI approvals and the different, uh, formal processes we enter into for contracts, but we'll also be coming with, uh, to you with, uh, presentations of conceptual designs, study sessions on projects. I know I've, we've spoken with Board members, uh, that would like some more in-depth looks early on, and so we'd like to take special nights to sit down with you on each project at, at different intervals to, to bring you up to speed.
Great, so as Steve mentioned, we are full speed ahead of four of our major construction projects right now, Stewart, McCarver, Wayne Wright, and Wilson High School with Arlington and Design, and Mary Lion and Brown's Point. Um, going out for an RFQ for architectural services very soon. So, and I'm a little out of order here, but, uh, we'll start then with Stewart McCarver. Um, came to you on June eleventh, and you approved the first bid package, uh, the second bid package is coming out, uh, to your, our July ninth Board meeting for approval, and then our third package coming in August, and so, um, just as a reminder, the GCCM process gives us, uh, the benefit of negotiating costs, providing cost protection options, uh, consideration for prioritizing the scope of work, uh, as well as working together with SCANSKA in a partnering mentality, and so they have been very helpful thus far in helping us identify cost savings, um, in a, in a very, um, interesting bid climate, and so we're very grateful for that. One thing I will mention is the first bid package, which you did approve on the June eleventh meeting, was probably the messiest one. Um, things that are, uh, unpredictable, structural things, um, the other bid packages that are coming out are gonna be more predictable, and so we're, we're looking forward to seeing how those numbers come in, uh, for your approval. Okay. It's the wrong way. Uh, on Wilson, uh, on May twenty-first, uh, the planning and construction team reviewed bid proposals and received the lowest bid for nearly sixteen million dollars or seventeen percent over the project's budget. received the lowest bid for nearly $16 million, or 17% over the project's budget, as you know. We feel that our rebid happening on July 23rd will present a more efficient outcome for us. It will give us optimal exposure for the subcontractors and generals in the rebid process, so we anticipate a good outcome there. We anticipate starting construction for Wilson in August. And so just as a reminder to everyone that the amount of construction work available for Tacoma Public Schools, along with construction projects in the Pacific Northwest, has not only increased the demand in the construction market, but has also reduced the amount of contractors and subcontractors available for the current construction projects. The district is making a conscience, a conscious effort to be fiscally responsible, while also committing to the project's goals and timelines. Through this process, the district's planning and construction department will identify areas for consideration and prioritize the various scopes of work for future consideration based upon the upcoming bid proposals. I've already mentioned Stewart and McCarver, so moving on to Wainwright. We have a bid opening coming up here on July 2nd, and we anticipate that construction will start in late July, and we will be bringing that also for your approval on July 9th, when we have numbers in. Future projects. Arlington, we've mentioned. We're just getting to the end of schematic design here at the end of July. With Sammy, portables are moving today. Oh, I should go in my order here. With Brown's Point, again, we'll be putting up for architectural services here in probably mid to late July, and we will begin that selection soon. With Sammy, we've had portables moving out to the triangle, starting either tonight or early on Monday. We're trying to avoid any problems with the Taste of Tacoma that's going on, so we're working with Metro Parks to coordinate that. So we should have our hope, and our target is to have portables on-site by the end of the week and at the latest, Sunday night, the 5th of July.
So real quickly there, our plan is that students will, based on your desired outcome in our joint meeting back in January, is to keep kids in the park. And we believe that through the work of Director Ushka, Director Viall, and the joint parks, that there has been a real collaborative step forward to ensure that that happens. That allows us a short-term solution for students at Sammy until we have one of the buildings brought up, and then allows us to also continue to help invest and support the school site being in multiple locations with a, an opportunity to do that with more time to plan for a better long-term solution there at Camp 6. And so we're excited about being able to not have to take kids out of the park next school year, and I really appreciate the project management and construction team for helping facilitate that.
Thank you. One other note on that, we've formed a joint boards committee, which Commissioner Ushka and Commissioner Viall have been a part of, with the couple of park commissioners and other staff from Metro Parks. And we've recently had a presentation on the updated design for Sammy. It's exciting to see it take shape, and so we're interested in having a session where we can go have McGrannahan and Michael McGavitt come in and present to the board that same presentation to, again, get you excited, so we hope to do that at some point. We are putting together a communication that can be used for that and for the joint boards and for the public, so we're excited about that coming out.
Director Ushka.
I just want to jump in real quick. We want to make, Director Viall and I want to make sure that the full board is aware of everything that's going on. The things that we're seeing are pretty amazing. They're doing some great work in trying to design something that's complementary to the park and also enhances the academic experience, is, well, it's never been done before. And for, for doing the impossible, I've seen some pretty incredible work, and I just want to say that and maybe build some anticipation of that meeting.
If I may just add as well, one of the unique features about that is, is there's spaces that are designed specifically not just for the Sammy students, but for learning, and students from all over the city will be able to access. Right now, we have a summer program called Explore, where there's over nearly, nearly 1,000 elementary students that are spending time in the park, in the museums, and so as we're designing these spaces, we're looking at how they become an asset for the, for the, not only the community, and not only for the Sammy students, but for students all across the district, which is really exciting.
Well, if I may, sorry. The opportunity for a really significant community space in the zoo that can be used after hours is absolutely there. I think that as a community member, we, it's much to our advantage to have more community spaces that are beautiful where we can have events, and this could very possibly be one of them. So I'm looking forward to when that calendar opens personally.
Great. Thank you. As I mentioned, Mary Lion, we're looking for architectural services midsummer, and so we'll be putting that RFQ out very soon. And then with McCarver, we had tours to McKinley on June 4th, and a farewell celebration on June 10th, both which were well-attended. And I have to say a big thank you to our maintenance staff for getting McKinley up and running in record time, and so it's going to be exciting to have kids there as well. With Wainwright, we had a, so these are our celebrations. We had a groundbreaking event, and that was on June 3rd, and it was exciting to see the kids in their yellow vests and their hard hats, and I felt sorry for the photographer who got a plume of dirt at her at the groundbreaking, but it was, it was a wonderful event. And then with Hunt, sorry, with Stewart at Hunt as a swing school, we'll be having a back-to-school event that Stacy Flores will be arranging with the principal there. That's what we have for you tonight. Questions?
Our presentation, I think, had some additional slides.
It did. Yeah.
So I think, I'm not sure if you skipped them or not, the additional slides were regarding budget and revised budget?
Sure. So we actually, the technical team revised the PowerPoint so that it displayed larger today, and so what we presented just now, what we have access to for the television, doesn't have those remaining slides. So if you would like to ask any questions, we're prepared to discuss them, but unfortunately, the PowerPoint we have linked doesn't have those few slides.
So I think it would make sense if you, do you have access to them? Just, you know, just do those comparative budgets, so that the public knows where we are?
I could email it to you.
Sure, I can read, I can read the slide, and you can comment.
That'd be good.
Okay. Yeah, we don't have access to them here. Just do.
So Stewart, the original budget was 58 million. The revised budget is 62 million?
Correct. And so the, when we came to, I think about two and a half, three months ago, we talked to you about some of the issues that we came across that were unforeseen. We had some concrete issues where in 1924, when both Stewart and McCarver were built, that the concrete seems to have been mixed with salt seawater, and so the cement lime degradation has occurred, and the break strength of what we thought we would have in terms of structural vertical load capacity was reduced significantly. And so instead of building upon the structural system that's existing, it now became somewhat of a liability in areas as it related to seismic. So as it stands, the building was safe, and it carried its own load, but now that we're doing our intervention, we're having to kind of beef up the system a bit more than we had anticipated for the seismic and shear load. That's happening at both Stewart and McCarver. Those were significant cost impacts. At McCarver, one of the issues that we ran into with the cost overrun there is that McCarver was originally built as a middle school, and so the square footage is up in the 80,000 range, and we're trying to adapt it to our modern, more like 55,000-square-foot program. And so we were hoping that we could leave an area off, maybe in the basement, and not develop it, but we're finding that the building block pieces, the commons, the library, the gym, the cafeteria, really, you can't leave one out. And so we're developing a lot more space than we had originally planned, and then we also ran into the same structural issues. So that's McCarver and Stewart.
Okay. Wilson, original budget was, or do you have a comment on either of those two schools? Okay, sure. Director Ushka.
So when we were originally presented with the plans on Stewart, both myself and Director Viall were really clear about wanting to see better grade interior finishes, such as we've done at Washington Hoyt. We were concerned, and we expressed very clearly, that the difference in interior finishes showed inequity in different economic areas of the city. So I hadn't heard back on that, and I was at the enact meeting where there was a presentation done, and when I was, when I asked about that, the architect person informed me that that wasn't possible, sorry. And I really appreciated that answer. I'm being a little bit sarcastic there. I would like you to address that. I don't know if there's a price per square foot, but it doesn't appear that we're building equitably throughout the district. I look at these pictures, and Wainwright is beautiful, and of course, Washington was beautiful, and, you know, there's not as much flair on some of the schools south of I-5, so.
Sure. I can address, so one of the things that was, that benefited Washington was that it's a very small school. It's a 45,000-square-foot elementary school, and so we did, we were able to stretch that budget a little further. On Stewart, the thing that you'll see that's different, Washington is locked into a very historic spatial grid, and so we really didn't, we didn't have an opportunity to, to open it up or celebrate any of the interior structure, which also came at a cost savings, because basically, we went in and seismically improved the building to where it needed to be, but left many of the walls and the interior partitions where they were. And so that allowed us to put a little more money from the project into some of the wainscote in the original building. What you're going to see at Stewart that's going to really excite you, that you're not going to see at Washington, is that we have, if you've been in Stewart, and you know that when you're walking around either the first floor or second floor, you're just in a box tunnel. And so the structural interventions and the opening up of that facility and the expression of technology is going to be phenomenal. And so you're going to see those stair corridors, that the interior light wells that you kind of walk around, those are now going to be all open, glazed above, full staircases up through, vertically connected back to the auditorium and the theater, the heart of the school, and those are going to be at the, at the base of those wells, CTE labs with a lot of technology. We are still using wainscoting and the similar style finishes in terms of what you see in the hallways. So you will see that warmth, that expression. It's not going to be colored for the dark wood expression and some of the trim that we had in Washington. We chose to spend the money to open up the school and do a more expressive 21st century educational environment with a lot of different educational spaces. So you'll see opportunities that you see in Geiger, where there's places to get outside the four walls of the classroom and have opportunities. We're talking about differentiated instruction. We're going to have differentiated spaces to support that. And so that was one of the major trade-offs.
And if I can interrupt, I've actually seen the presentation twice now, so I really think that there are some very cool features to the building.
Yes.
But there's that sense of inequity, and of course, Director and Viall and I made a very specific request, and we got no specific reply. So looking at that, perhaps we can compare this to the original cost versus the revised cost of Washington, and the cost per square foot on average for grade school versus middle school, or something, so that we have an apples-to-apples comparison of equity. I will mention that not only are there some very cool spaces in the new Stewart, but the auditorium space is very much historic, and it's, it's...
It's being brought back to life. It's going to be beautiful.
Yes, so I don't, I don't mean to diss the whole project. I just want to make sure that we are being equitable. We can evidence that we're being equitable, that if there's, it's important to our community that they know that that's true.
Yeah, I wanted to make another comment, too. You mentioned the auditorium, and one of the beautiful things about the auditorium is it's really going to be a cafetorium, or other phrases you can use. It will have retractable seating that goes back into the wall. It can be auditorium, it can be an open space. And if you look throughout the school in Washington, and when you look through the school in Stewart, you're going to see flexible spaces, and we're talking about the ultimate in flexibility. So teachers being able to use all of their walls, or many of their walls, as teaching, teaching walls, furnishings that can roll away and be put in place, and so I think there's going to be a great comparison there about the kinds of functionality the spaces have, too. So that's another piece of the equity.
Okay, well, that, in addition to making sure that our architects aren't saying, "Well, sorry, we can't do that because we didn't have enough money," in a public meeting, and that's not the full story, would probably be a good idea.
Yes, that's, that was unfortunate that that was said. But what, if you'd like, we could prepare a Friday report as a cost breakdown. One thing that is difficult to compare is, Washington was on two acres and 45,000 square feet, and Stewart is on eight or nine, and it's 120-plus thousand square feet. And so the scale is a lot different.
Well, there are different academic environments for middle school versus grade school, but if, but I would like us to find a way to create, to really talk about apples-to-apples across our facilities, and that's probably going to require some sort of a formula.
Superintendent Santorino?
Director Viall, we're here, she would probably have one.
So I just want to be really, be really clear about what you're asking for, Director Ushka. So an apples-to-apples comparison, you just like a rationale that shows what the differences are between the two sites and how the money was spent? Is that what you're asking for? So a rationale for the differences? So if Stewart Middle School doesn't have the same finish on the inside?
If I, if I may?
Okay.
A comparison for this particular answer would be good, but I don't think that this is the first time this question has come up in the city, and I doubt it's the last time. So if we could think about a way that we can do apples-to-apples comparison across our facilities, that would be useful. I might be asking for something that doesn't exist. I majored in philosophy, not math. So I'm, I'm open to that feedback as well, but I think that we are doing a lot of work to ensure that there's equity, and being able to evidence that for our community in terms of buildings is important, because south of I-5, there is a feeling of having been left out of construction dollars in the past. And it might not be true, but we need to evidence it one way or another. I would like us to.
So Mr. Mirakami, you're the, you're the expert, and so you're going to be able to get, give us an analysis that'll show us how the money was spent, to show that it is equitable? That's what I think Ms. Ushka is asking.
We can show you where the money's divided between site and building. I'm not sure what kind of parallels you're going to see, because the programs, the square footage, the site sizes are so different. So I'm, I'm interested to put those numbers together. We have to wait until the last bid package for Stewart and McCarver comes in and look at where we are. We can look at the budget and see what, how far that's gotten us, and see if there's a comparison. But again, there's so much difference in the programs, the building size, the square footage, that the, the dollars of leveraging on a larger building, the cost goes down in terms of, you know, drywall packages or paint packages, because you have a, trying to think of the terminology, a means of cheaper prices based on gross square footage. I mean, it's just, it's a different animal. It'd be interesting to look at McCarver, but again, McCarver is twice the size as Washington, and so those dollars have to stretch further, and the budget increases reflect that of trying to get to a level appropriate, so that we are equitable. We did have an opportunity, one of our project managers, Kristy Berry, had a friend visiting from, yeah, California, and she had brought up her mom, and her mom had taught on the east side, and they took her around, and they saw Lister, and she was in tears that no matter what part of the town, the level of quality that we build to, the standards is phenomenal. And so we're keeping that up. We're going to be really excited and proud of what we're doing at Stewart and McCarver. So I'm interested in presenting you numbers and seeing where we can get to, to help the conversation, but know that the filters we're applying are equity. Doesn't matter what the location is, we're trying to do the best we can on every site.
Sure, and I guess that the only comment that I would make is that I, while I think that I'm pretty inventive and spectacular in my questions, I can't imagine that I'm the first public official to ever ask this question in terms of public facilities, so maybe there's some other models of, that we can look at in terms of expressing that.
We will look into it.
Yeah, and I, we'd like to share with you some of the things that we're looking at for McCarver and Arlington as an example, because some of the most innovative thinking and discourse that I've been involved in have been right around those two projects currently, so that would be a great opportunity to perhaps, in a visual and detailed way, show some of the comparisons.
Deputy Superintendent Garcia.
Our, our elementary schools are designed around a system of guiding principles, and so, that you've been presented to and seen in the past, and there was literature written about them. And one of the features is that, is that every building goes through an asset mapping process. And so in Stewart's example, the community was involved in what does that look like? What are the resources? And so I appreciate what Director Ushka is saying regarding the uniqueness of program, the uniqueness of neighborhood. It may be helpful for us to articulate the intentionality around the equity in some of the features around Stewart and McCarver at an earlier stage, so that you, as officials, can also tell that story, but also share that with others. So not just cost-to-cost analysis, but what's our intentional design, and why is that important for that specific part of town, or where did that feedback come from? from? One of the additional pieces to the budget's rising is the cost of construction is rising as well. And so that's not to say that we're trying to shortchange one side of town or the other, but as things come up such as concrete and more is having to be spent in infrastructure, we may need to come back to you and say, with some tough decisions, do you want to increase budget here? And if so, what goes away in order to continue to level the playing field as far as the aesthetics pieces that are important to a community and that we value as well? And so we can work on those pieces, but wrestle around with that. And what does that mean for a process perspective so that we don't get too far down the process and, and not deliver what the expectation that you have is aboard?
All right, before I move on to Wilson, I just had a Stewart-related question. Is there a reason that we didn't do a going-away event at Stewart?
I would say that working with the, the leadership team there, the scheduling didn't work, the interest wasn't there, they were really focused on Hunt and celebrating getting into a school. And they're actually, they were amazingly excited at the upgrade of going to Hunt. And so we've got Hunt back online and running and ready for them, the signage is up, and they chose to pursue a welcoming back-to-school kickoff celebration.
They also decided to do a Running of the Green event, which they held on a, they had a big community fun run as kind of their last parting event at Stewart and that's what they decided they wanted to pursue. So we worked with them to help do that instead.
Okay. Did we engage with the community? People have such a visceral connection to their school. I have a friend who just posted pictures of our elementary school and it instantly brought back memories. I just encourage us to really, I appreciate the transition for the students and the arrangements we made with Hunt and getting them focused on Hunt. But for the alums out there that might have liked to have had some sort of closure, I think it would be, those sorts of things in the grand scheme of things are pretty easy to put together. They don't have to be very long, but they can be quite impactful for people. So I would ask that we try to make every effort to have those sorts of events for people as well.
Yeah, I agree, I agree with you. And I, I think that we should tell the principals that's important to the community as part of what's going on. But as a member of the Tacoma Historical Society Board, I did go out with another member of that board and they did a time capsule. The students all put things in, every class put something into the time capsule. So I did that the same day as the Running of the Green. So they did a little bit of that, you know, on a school day, so.
All right, any more questions related to Stewart or McCarver?
Yeah, I have a question about, about Stewart. I like the idea of the window wells, or whatever you call it, the light wells, being enhanced because they did have those adjacently and they did get rid of them when they remodeled. And I just, I have never seen it before, so I'm kind of concerned about retractable seats in the auditorium. So I, I hope they work and don't break down and, but it's a good system.
We've been doing them on projects up and down the I-5 corridor for twenty, twenty years, easy. They're really efficient, they're easily maintained, and they're very simple to operate. And so what they can do is make multiple-use spaces out of something that would have been locked into one, one type of use. And so everything we're looking at, at doing is multiple-use function-oriented. And so it's a telescoping chair platform that can basically draw back, it runs on a very small motor, on wheels, and, and just tucks into the wall.
So what, what does it look like? Like a Murphy bed or something?
No, no, you wouldn't tell the difference.
You can't tell?
I mean, if you can, if you think about all the high schools that we have operable bleachers, it's that same technology, but with chairs instead of wood platforms.
Director Wenska, we can take you up to, Todd Beamer High School on Fedaway has the same approach. If you'd like to see that, the team can arrange for us to go up and quickly see them.
Yeah.
Even over the summer, it's right in our back door.
And I know that people ask me about the statues inside Stewart's auditorium. I think there's Washington and Lincoln or something and hoping those would be maintained or, you know, retained. I imagine they will be.
But we'll look into it.
Yeah.
All right, Wilson, the original budget forty million, the revised budget fifty-one-point-five million?
So the original number was, I'll start this conversation, 'cause I helped start the original budget. The original budget was based on some square footage estimates. And when we got into the feasibility study of what really Wilson needed to be complete, we found a lot more need and want to do at that site than the budget would allow. And so we stretched it as far as we could. We looked to incorporating its state match monies that were anticipated back into the budget. Instead of being a future project, we actually turned it back in and tried to maximize what we could do in, in making the greatest grounds. There are still pieces that we would like to go further with. The cafeteria is one, that we'd like to get the aesthetics up to where it should be, but it's very functional. And so we're focusing on the academic wing, the music hall, the fields, improving the gym pool building and the locker rooms. And then the other piece is, Wilson is a campus-based school that has a central plant that is very expensive to get replaced. And so it's got a series of underground utilitors that you can walk underneath all the buildings. And there's massive amount of pipes and hydronic loops and telecommunications and power all running through. And so a lot of that has to be upgraded. And so that piece, along with all the other wants and needs, we've tried to help prioritize working with the team, the community, to look at what this phase is gonna include.
Questions or comments on Wilson?
Just wanna ask a question. What's the life of that pool? You know, is it in pretty good shape?
It is actually in good shape. The pool deck needs to be resurfaced. We did do the major reconstruction project of building the second drain when that legislation came in years ago about pool safety. So that's been fixed. And then through the course of, of this project, one of the nice things is the maintenance and operations team identified a major leak in the pool where tens of thousands of gallons were being pumped out into the ground because a pipe under the pool deck was broken. And so we've gotten that fixed and so the pool's operating a lot more efficiently. And the new project looks at rebuilding restrooms and changing rooms and locker rooms because there's high public use at that facility. And so there'll be a public improvement asset piece there and then mechanical upgrades to the pumps and the filters.
Do we monitor things like a, a leak?
Oh, yes.
A pool leak?
Yeah.
I mean, did we catch it fairly quickly?
Um, not as quickly as we could, you know, we couldn't figure out where the leak was. And it was identified as there's a surge tank. And the surge tank was leaking. And so that was the first thing we, we identified, but it wasn't making up the volume. And we actually did a, a trace and got folks to go down some very small shafts in a safe manner, but to identify where the leak was. And we shut things down and found it, so.
Okay. I was gonna ask you another question about that pool. When was that pool built?
I don't know the specific year that that was added on.
In the fifties, maybe?
I would assume it was, yeah, in the forties or fifties.
Or no, wait, the school wasn't built till the sixties, so it'd have to be early sixties, correct?
We'll get back to you on that. I don't know the specific dates.
Yeah. Was it, I think it was, was it original to the school?
I do not know.
Okay.
Gale says at least nineteen fifteen.
Yeah.
At least.
How would you know?
Well, she would say.
We'll text Director Viall.
Yes.
She'll have, she'll have all of the information on the pool. All right, any other questions pertaining to Wilson? On to Wainwright, original budget thirty million, revised budget thirty-five million?
So when we made the decision, it was originally planned as an elementary school. And so when we looked at making it intermediate, we added things like a middle school-sized gym, lockers, a bigger commons, science labs. So that all increased square footage and cost. That's the simple answer. One of the really things, you look at Wainwright and it looks fancy and it looks expensive, but this is where great architects can, can move mountains at very little cost because it's thoughtful design, but with very effective, efficient materials. It's been vetted by our maintenance operations department in their review to make sure it's durable. But it's not gonna be the full brick Washington. It's, it's simple materials used in very expressive ways.
Any questions pertaining to Wainwright? Any overall questions? Just have, I continue to be concerned that we're gonna run out of money. So very reasonable explanations for cost overruns. And I'm worried that we're going to run out of money at the expense of the schools on the back end of the building cycle. Can you help alleviate my concerns?
So Rob and I have been talking about this every day for the last few months. One of the great celebrations and things we wanna bring to you to show is the new Arlington model. One of the things that you, when you plan a, a school and you add up all the square footages for the classrooms and the programmed areas, you typically add another thirty percent and that's hallways and walls and things that don't actually add to the educational spaces typically. And one of the things that we're looking at Arlington is making those hallways be shared activity spaces and creatively overlapping spaces so that we're reducing the circulation so that no one's space is just purely circulation. And working with the design team, working with Tony Pace, our assistant superintendent, and the level directors, Rob's picked up the team and ran down this path that, "We can't wait to show you what this looks like." And the overall square footage, you can look at Geiger, Geiger's at sixty-eight thousand square feet. Arlington right now is between fifty-three and fifty-eight because of those efficiencies. And when you think about five hundred dollars per square foot, we've got that project down at target budget, meeting and actually exceeding the space programmatic statements that we started with. Arlington has the potential of an individual teacher accessing up to two thousand square feet of dedicated space rather than just a typical classroom at nine hundred square feet. Because there's gonna be opportunity to have a shared activity bar, there's gonna be an area for direct instruction, and then a smaller collaborative area. And so there's multiple opportunities to gather kids in different ways and using that square footage instead of building hallways.
So we've created a, a list of ideas that are helping us formulate a plan to make sure that when we get to the end of the money, we've done all the schools that we promised. So we're intimately aware of the need to balance. And, and what's nice has been the innovative discussions about, well, how can we be more efficient in how we're building our buildings? Make them look beautiful, make them highly functional, make them equitable across the district. So I, I believe that as we continue to share increasingly more with the board and leadership, I think you'll, it'll start to come into focus and you'll see that we've, we've got a plan to move it forward well.
Rob, you should tell them about the shred you're planning with the architects in, in currently contracted and others to come to the table.
Sure. So trying to be proactive, we, we've taken both McGranahan and Mailham, Mailham being on Arlington and McGranahan being on Sammy, and, and have basically allowed, told them that we need to get to a certain number of dollar per square foot or to a certain maximum allowable construction cost. And so in keeping with that, we've invited B.C.R.A. and Erickson McGovern, some other firms, some other end-users in neighboring districts to be a part of a budget shred, a brainstorming session where we come up with ways to say, what does a building look like when we build it for X amount per square foot? Or what are some other ideas? How we can be more efficient in the way we build our buildings? And so I think that's a process where their peers are challenging their peers. And, and I, and I think with that group of people in the room, we'll, we'll have even more ideas that we don't know of yet.
I appreciate that approach. Superintendent Santoro?
So if I were a member of the public, I would be adding the overages and thinking there is no way that you can absorb the amount of money that we're gonna have, you know, that are, that's already been identified. So can you talk to the board and the public about other revenue sources that we will have to adjust, you know, adjust these overrides?
Sure. I don't have the specific numbers in front of me. We did present the numbers in a, in a meeting on our last update, I think about two months ago, where we identified the various pots of money. Anticipated state match that was confirmed for our McCarver, Stewart and Wilson High School equated to about thirty million, which was being reassigned to each of the projects. Coming into the projects, we had savings in the neighborhood of six to seven million dollars, I wanna say, roughly, that were contingency saved on past projects that would be rolled in. We had an additional four million in state match come in off of Washington Elementary. So there was contingency monies, there's anticipated state match dollars. And then built into the five hundred million dollar bond was forty-five million in small capital dollar projects. And of that forty-five million, we made promises to do a hundred and eighty-seven projects that roughly equated to twenty million dollars. And so we had anticipated an additional twenty-five million dollars in that bond that could go to small capital projects in the future and also project contingencies. And then each project has contingency money built into it as well, along with escalation at three percent. So as we go down the road and interest rates rises and construction gets back, it may outpace the three percent that we projected to compound annually, but some of the anticipation was that the unknown could be covered by about twenty-five million.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
Yes. I have some questions about Arlington. So for quite a few years now, Manitow has been super overcrowded. I mean, over six hundred students. Edison also is way overcrowded. And it was always my vision that Arlington would take up some of the slack because as soon as we remodel a school, we have many students that wanna go to these new schools. Well, it doesn't sound to me like it's being built to take up that slack of the numbers. And that concerns me. That's one question first.
So can I start though? So Arlington is a small school that can reach a four hundred and fifty student capacity due to its seven portables that are on site. And right now, those portables are not being used necessarily all for classroom spaces. And so when we go in with our new model of a four hundred and fifty, which we've targeted as our ideal student population to be effective with the student and principal-to-teacher ratios that we wanna try and achieve, four fifty is our target for our new schools moving forward. We, I, we do anticipate Arlington will draw in additional enrollment because of the newness and the excitement that's coming. But we also are looking at, we discussed the district's consultant, Dick Withicam, and the springboard proposal that we're looking at for the enrollment in boundary catchment areas as we bring Wainwright back online. And through that process, we'll be presenting to you and to the community, we're going through a very public process that Mr. Withicam presented to you. And looking at the effects of bringing Wainwright back and looking at DeLong, looking at Edison, looking at Manitow, and proposing adjustments to bring the, the enrollment areas down to a more manageable size.
So also, when I look at Arlington, so I, I went to Seattle and I saw Hamilton Middle School that was designed by the same people who did Washington. And when I talked to the teachers, they had all these shared spaces, which are totally unused. And the teacher said to us, "We would rather have larger classrooms than these shared spaces because we can't use them for, we can't let these middle school kids be out there by themselves without supervision." So it's unused space. So I look at Arlington, I, I would really like to see these plans early if it's not a desirable design and the board can say something early on. I mean, it's kinda scary to me to think we're not gonna have hallways. So, I'm sorry, but it just sounds kind of strange, but, I mean, maybe, maybe it's gonna look really great, but I can't envision it.
We can't wait to show you. It's gonna be exciting to see. It's not the open plan of the seventies.
No.
It better not be.
It's, it's looking at collaborative, shared, overlapping spaces with better acoustics, better supervision. But more importantly, we have the, the support of our leadership in terms of how is it that we wanna deliver education and aligning that with the facility and to marry those two in a way that the open plan of the seventies completely failed at.
I wanted to add, so best instructional practice is not always lecture format from the front. It employs a number of learning modalities, as you know, and so we're really starting there. Our filter is what is gonna be good for learning and how do we create a flexible space where someone teaching in a traditional manner can do it and someone teaching in a completely different, new, progressive manner can do it and everything in between. And so the filter begins with what is gonna be good for learning based on educational research around best instructional practice. And so these buildings, moving forward, will be, in, in my opinion, the most adaptable, flexible, modular spaces possible. So we are excited to show you the design where it is so far in Arlington.
All right, thank you. Thank you for the report. I appreciate the diligence. I think this board's gonna continue to be engaged. We have a half a billion dollars that the public has entrusted us with. And in conversations that we've had, the expectation is that Wa, from Washington to Hunt, those schools are equally functioning. Hunt, those schools are equally functional and aesthetically pleasing and that we don't skimp out as we get towards the end or pick and choose winners and losers geographically. So I think that you'll continue to hear us ask the tough questions, and I appreciate your candor, and I look forward to this continued conversation.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item number 12, board comments and reports. Director Miller?
Nothing at this time.
Congratulations on navigating your microphone.
I have no report either.
Director Eshka?
I have the great honor of being at four different public meetings on our, five different public meetings on our innovative schools proposals. So I look forward to a dialogue from this board on that, as well as, we've already mentioned, the collaborative meeting with Metro Parks regarding the new Sammy slash zoo facility. So I also wanna reiterate to be prepared for that, that presentation and let us know if you have any questions in advance so that we can work with Parks and our group to make sure that those are reflected in presentations. That's it, thank you.
Right, thank you. And that's a nice segue. So I have a question for the three of you relating to innovative schools. So we are in the process of vetting those proposals, engaging the community, and better understanding their thoughts via their input. Is there any additional information that you need as we move towards a date to vote on those RFPs? Director Eshka?
I'm gonna apologize in advance if I ask for this and you say it's in my email someplace. As you know, I've been in a little bit of transition and I have not read every single email. However, I've gotten some questions that are really looking at being concerned at the potential impact on other schools in the district. And I don't know how to see that information clearly, but I, it would be something that would be valuable to me to see from an either or or a both situation in weighing the decision of whether or not it's a viable option.
Enrollment impacts, is that the concern?
Yeah, enrollment impacts.
It's a, that's a hard thing to call, you know, to call, just like it is with the, you know, with the charter schools. Because we, you, we don't know where the students are gonna come from, we don't know if we're gonna pull, you know, it, it's just really hard to anticipate. About the best we can do is, is talk about the numbers. Rosalyn's here, I don't know if you, Rosalyn, if you have any other ideas about what we could do, but I can't imagine we could do anything besides talk about, here's the numbers, take an even percentage from each school and say what that would mean, you know, for the, the high school enrollment at each school. But we know they don't, that students don't choose to make those decisions and, you know, in equal packages. So it's hard to talk about what the impact would be. Rosalyn, anything else?
Well, you know, the, the thing that really resonates with me is that we can make this whatever you want it to be. And so if, if we wanna let kids in from the outside, we can do that. If we wanna exclude kids from the outside, we can do that. If we wanna say that these are the limits that we're putting on where kids can come from or how many from any particular school, we can do that. There's no expectation in that. And so with that being said, that opens up the limits for what I can offer in options of impacts. And so I agree with Carla that we, excuse me, Superintendent Santorno, on what we can provide as far as the number of kids within a program, but that was really included as part of the budget package in each of the proposals. I, I just think that the opportunity is, is up to us to, to define what that looks like in, in all of the situations and the cost of the building and what we allocate out to them. And that as we decide on which proposal is the better proposal, then we design a school around what our needs are moving from that point.
I think that in terms of just what you just indicated, and of course, it's obvious now that you've said it, in terms of how many students from which schools, and we kinda have a, the way it's been working in our others like schools has been a lottery of equity, equitable from all parts of the district. And that might be a way for me to, to see that clearly and also to articulate it. It was brought to me as a concern from a constituent, and I didn't have an immediate answer and wanted to make sure that it was something that was addressed and that there was some clarity for. So I appreciate that, and I hope that as a board, we can look at those options clearer.
Director Miller?
So I've made two requests for financial. One of them is how much it will cost to operate a building. When we were talking about closing elementary schools and high schools and all that, the cost of $500,000, $750,000 a year came up, and that would be the savings in closing the school. One of my concerns is we have two school buildings coming online here pretty soon, Wainwright and Hunt, and you bring on a third. What will be the ultimate cost for that as we, you know, look at our budget down the road? My second one was, we've talked about bringing in other students from throughout the, from other districts, and the state apportionment's around, what, 5,700?
Fifty, it's 5,100 for the actual apportionment for each kid.
Yeah. So, and I've asked Rosalyn through Carla to come up with a figure, what does it really cost to educate a student here in Tacoma? So if, if it costs an extra 2,000 that comes from local funds, that state apportionment then goes down. So it was that number that I'm curious in knowing, and Rosalyn says she'll have that for us soon.
All right. Director Wensko, do you have a question?
Yeah, um, yeah, I had a question. I didn't write it down. So I'm concerned about, or I'm interested, I know that we got a lot of comments after those public hearings. I wanna know who would actually go to that school. I mean, that's really what I wanted out of comments, not, you know, somebody who never had an intention of ever going there. It's, I'd like to know, would we have enough students to fill up those programs? So enough interest in the district.
Deputy Superintendent Garcia?
One of the things that you designed in your processes is, you know, one is you designed that these would be not neighborhood schools. So it, it poses the dilemma that kids potentially could come from all over. So that begs the question of how do you get, figure out who will come? Well, it may depend on who's, what proposal, if you decide to move forward with a proposal at all. The, the other piece that you were very clear about is that if these schools could not sustain themselves, that you would, as a board, shut them down within five years. That that was the, the piece to, that your policy clearly articulated if they didn't perform, if they didn't have a sustainable budget. And from the very get-go, you were very clear with your public conversations about that, that you couldn't just start something that was going to cost additional dollars and additional dollars. So funding is, is critical. There's different ways to look at it based on which kids come. So it's, it's complex because if you have half the kids come from inside Tacoma Public Schools and half hypothetically came from outside, that would vary the amount of money that would be spent per pupil. The population that, if they're English language learners kids or if they're free and reduced lunch kids, that may all drive additional dollars as well, which will add to the complexities of how much students will bring with them. It's, it's an extremely complex issue. It's challenging. It's a lot, a lot of reason why people don't do it in there. With that said, the, we'll need a year to work through some of those details. And you've built an infrastructure to say, is at any time that, that we would have to bring you quarterly updates so that you would feel comfortable enough how far, if you choose to go with this. Which is even part of the critical about timing is this is not something that we can just pull off in, in six months. So we, we, we don't mean to sound hesitant with confirming answers. It just is, a lot's gonna depend on your decision of which, if any, that you choose to operate, and then which conditions you'd like to do that.
Yeah. Director Eshka?
Something along those lines that would help me that might not be very hard to do, although at this date it might not work, is simply is that there is a survey question to the people that looked at the information that says, knowing the information that you have, would you consider going or sending your child to the school? Period. Do you live in Tacoma or outside of Tacoma? Just to get some kind of idea of, would they go there? The other reason I ask that is because the culture of Tacoma is famous for really wanting things and then not actually supporting them once they're there. They are contrary to any marketing studies in the universe, and we don't wanna be caught in that loop. So the more evidence that we can get and names on a list, the better off I'm gonna feel looking at taking these kind of leaps, although I think they're both fabulous ideas.
So the last question for your consideration is then when we will take the formal vote? As we look at our schedule, we're scheduled now to meet on Thursday, July 9th. We could schedule a vote that day. We're also now scheduled to meet Thursday, August 20th. That would give us a little more time to do the due diligence. Director Eshka?
So while I was at the second public meeting, district staff informed me and I announced to the public that it would be at the later meeting in July. And now that we've canceled that meeting, I would therefore be more comfortable doing it in August than July 9th because there's people that have an anticipation of a greater opportunity for input.
I agree with that.
Director Wensko?
I agree with that.
With the 20th? Director Miller?
Superintendent Santorno has her hand up. I'd like to see what she has to say.
I was just checking with Rosalyn. Rosalyn, I had down that we had said that we might have, that we might do a special innovation vote on August 13th. Did that, do you recall that? Did that come from you?
No, I think you told me that.
Oh, I told you that? Okay, good. And we don't have to do that. We can do it on, then August 20th would be another way to do it. And that gives us enough time.
The 13th would just be solely for the purpose of an innovation vote?
August 20th?
The 13th of August.
The board could notice a special meeting if you so chose.
Would that be the only agenda item at this time that we would anticipate?
If, if you were gonna add a, if you were gonna add an August 20, an August 13th meeting, then we would ask to do a budget hearing with that. And it's probably a great time to just take a minute to tell you what's going on with the finances and the budget. So we're legally required to adopt the budget by August 31st. And we had intended originally to have a budget hearing in July on the 23rd and then have our budget adopted on the 20th to provide the public feedback time that you asked for last year. And so we wanted to be respectful of that. However, the legislature has made that a little more challenging for us this year. And so since we still don't have a legislative budget, it'll be very unlikely that we'd be able to get any kind of documentation to you by July 10th to where you could have a hearing that would be anything meaningful. And so what we'll likely do is have a, a hearing and a board meeting adopting the budget on the same day. But with all the information that we have on the website, we feel the public can make commentary now. They don't need to wait for a hearing other than it would be a public forum, but we would encourage the public to communicate that with us now. That being said, so if we could do a 12, a meeting on the 13th, we would add a hearing that day and then do adoption a week later, which would provide at least some time period for a public comment. But we can do the hearing and the, and the adoption on the same day.
Okay. Just, there is a huge gap between the July 9th and August 20th board meeting. And so if we can fit something in in between, I feel it might be a good
Sorry, I had a question. Well, one of the things that Steve has asked for also is that Steve feels, Steve has asked me to say that some of the bids for Wilson are gonna come in before that August 13th or August 20th date. And so he's asking for a special meeting. I think the dates proposed were the 28th, 29th, or 30th. So it, and it could be
Of July, July.
Of July to do, we could do a one-item board meeting, you know, one action item just to pass the, the bids that Steve is gonna need. So that's another option is to, you know, have a one-item. I'm assuming, Steve, that the August 13th would be too late, that you'd rather do it in July, that in those last three days in July.
Yeah, if we can possibly do it, it'll maximize the contractor's ability to mobilize before the start of the school year.
Okay, good.
And get the safety fencing up and
Okay.
Yeah.
So I hear consensus on the 20th to do a vote on innovative schools. Shall Vice President Viall and I work to build an agenda for the August 13th meeting? And then we also may need to come in for that one-item meeting to accommodate Director Markomi's needs.
So I would, I read request that Superintendent set up a schedule when we have the budget hearing.
On the 13th?
Whatever works, whatever works. The building needs and, and then the vote. So we have an idea of what's needed because it sounds like there's a few major things that it'd be nice to kinda get laid out.
So part of it's availability because we're in vacation season. So I wanna make sure that we have quorum, you know, in each one of those. So we've definitely got July 9th. If we do, we, we need another day in July, either the 28th, 29th, or 30th. I think the actual board meeting date is the 30th. Am I correct? Does anybody have a calendar out that can look at?
The 30th, the fifth, the fifth Thursday of July is July 30th.
Okay. So if we did it on a Thursday, then we could have a special meeting on the Thursday that would just be to approve bids. And then you could still do the innovation vote on the 20th. That gives you plenty of time to do that. Now, that would mean, though, that you'd have to do a budget hearing, oh, you'd do a budget hearing on the 20, on the 30th?
On the 30th.
And then vote on the August 20th. Perfect.
And then we wouldn't need a second meeting in August.
Correct.
Correct.
So that, Ms. Beatty and I can notice this properly in my hearing that
Yeah, please.
The board would like to have a special meeting on Thursday, July 30th to take into consideration Chief Operating Officer Markomi's proposals related to bids, as well as Chief Financial Officer Medina will have a public hearing related to the budget.
Correct.
6:00 PM here?
Sounds good.
Okay.
I'm available.
All right.
So that's all that matters.
Anything else for the good of the order? No executive session tonight, so we are adjourned.